Including Sound Transit and King County Metro and WashDOT. We also, as I mentioned, formed an interdepartmental team which included staff from Community Economic Development, Public Works, and Community Services. And finally, we held three developer forums, and these were designed to serve as an information exchange between the city and developers both. We were targeting commercial and residential developers, both market rate and affordable, who have worked in the city, and those with experience outside of the city, and those with experience with transit-oriented development projects. In total, we have 20 participants representing 16 organizations. And the discussion focused on land development, potential challenges, and lessons learned. And really, it was an opportunity for us to also advertise this to folks who may or not be as familiar with Renton and the future investments in this area. So this was a great opportunity for information sharing.
And so Katie and I wanted to also provide some clarity as to what this plan does and does not do, so that expectations are quite clear. First and foremost, what this plan does is set a vision for, of course, both leadership and staff, as well as the community at large, because we expect a substantial amount of growth in decades to come, and we want to make sure that there's an expectation for that. Secondly, it establishes funding. It helps us to justify city funds that should be dedicated to this area of the city, as well as help make us more competitive in grant applications, for example, at the state level, which we're already in pursuit of. It helps us to form partnerships, lays the groundwork for public and private partnerships, or at a minimum, good relationships with stakeholders in the area. It also establishes concepts. As I mentioned, this is one big concept, and each one of these concepts, such as open space areas that you might see in the land use map, will have to be vetted and really stand on their own accord in the future. And we'll be doing those, vetting those concepts as work programs. So this plan helps us to establish those work programs, such as code changes for Renton Municipal Code, or assessments of our infrastructure, and updates to other plans, such as the parks plan. What this plan does not do, however, is create any regulations whatsoever. Any regulations, any recommended changes to our code or zoning will be advanced as our normal annual docket program. It also does not create any streets. New roadways that might be shown would be created pursuant to existing Renton Municipal Code or by development agreement upon voluntary private property redevelopment. This is the table of contents for the plan, but today, we'll just be focusing on these five items, as Katie and I have kind of gone over the existing conditions and process for this plan. Starting with the concepts, the overall concept is to create, over the next 20 years and more, a vibrant commercial and residential district around the future transit hub, which may be augmented by light rail in the distant future. The area shown in the graphic represents the subarea, but your eyes are likely drawn to the eastern portion with the orange and red colors. This is the core area, where commercial, mixed with high-density residential, is envisioned to create an urban town center environment. The stronger red denotes where a strong commercial presence is anticipated, and the orange represents areas where less commercial activity is expected within those residential mixed-use projects. Many existing and future roads are shown in yellow to denote their importance, and many of them are bordered with a green line denoting a robust landscape buffer that will help to create a better multimodal environment. The most critical road shown is the east-west roadway with the dots, which is meant to act as a main street to facilitate a pedestrian-friendly commercial corridor with service, retail, dining businesses on the ground floor of residential buildings. The main street could serve as a type of festival street and would have an adjoining programmable open space. That's not quite evident on the graphic there. Throughout the remaining area, we hope to encourage residential development where allowed by zoning, with the light red denoting a commercial focus, and shades of blue denoting a stronger focus on job creation and office industrial and R&amp;D-type settings. Those orange blurry dots at key intersections along Lind Avenue represent commercial nodes, where through zoning and design standards, we intend to create concentrated areas for service, retail, and dining establishments to serve the area residents, employees, and visitors. The core area will require appropriately scaled and treated streets, as well as ground floor, commercial, and residences to activate them. Residents and visitors will also require open space and safe access throughout the area for remote travel. And shown on the screen here are just several images from developments around the region, which we think really helped to kind of capture the essence of what the plan hopes to achieve in the future. And this is an angled aerial view with some 3D buildings meant to give a sense of how redevelopment might look in the future. There are many high-power transmission lines throughout the area, which limit land uses below them. Parks, trails, and open space could be a good use of this land, considering their urban environment and substantial residential development envisioned for the area. The basis of the identity for the Rainier-Grady Junction Subarea is the Transit Rush Core Area, where an influx of residential development is critical for the successful creation of a main street. Smaller nodes along Lind Avenue will help to create and serve a greater area, and will eventually be connected to form a co-pisa, commercial residential urban environment, along Grady Avenue. Within the core area, and especially along Main Street, a pedestrian-oriented commercial presence will provide a unique identity, but regional retail will still have areas to locate at both the east and west ends of the core area. The expected private and public investments into the area will help the transformation, and in turn, the industrial employment areas outside of the core area will likely see new growth as a result. And infill development north of 7th Street will also help to create a stronger connection to downtown, within the South Renton neighborhood. As mentioned, the vision for the area is based on a substantial amount of residential development balanced with commercial development. A strong commercial presence will be expected in certain areas, like along the Main Street, but in other areas might be appropriate to expect more residential focus, such as the southern border along South Renton Neighborhood. And the crosshatched areas along Lind Avenue and along Great, excuse me, Southwest Grady, and then along Southwest 16th are areas where we propose rezones from medium industrial to commercial material zones to facilitate such residential mixed-use development. But as I mentioned, those proposed rezones would have to go through their own process through our annual docket changes. And as mentioned, a strong residential influx will be necessary to catalyze this new area and to see new developments, and we hope to establish a new multifamily housing property tax exemption area to be that catalyst. The MFT program is a great tool for encouraging housing, housing both market rate and affordable. At this time, staff do not have any specific recommendations for the proposed new MFTE area, such as the boundaries or the same program requirements, so the downtown and sunset areas programs should be applied. But we hope to advance this in the near future, and hopefully, parallel with the adoption of its plan. Katie?
As Paul mentioned in the beginning, one of the key elements or key strategies of the plan is to maximize multimodal access and transportation options, which really helps reimagine this area from what it is today. So it's very largely auto-dependent into an area with improved pedestrian and bike connectivity. So this will help integrate areas that are adjacent to the transit center. And this really is a goal for the entire subarea, but we've really emphasized this as a priority within the core, as shown on the screen. So, and we prioritize this area in particular, one, because of its proximity to the transit center, but also because of the development opportunities that surround it, and hopefully will help catalyze future development even outside of the core area. So the key principles are, one, to develop a street network that provides multimodal access and human-scale block sizes between the transit center and future commercial residential uses. To facilitate safe crossings, we'll need to ensure that there are several points of access throughout the core area, but especially between the crossings between Grady Way and Rainier Avenue at Talbot, as shown on the graphic here. Next slide, please. Implementing facilities identified in the Sydney's Trails and Bicycle Master Plan are also important to the subarea as a way to provide connections to the core, the transit center, and downtown, so that this might mean priority bike routes, or a shared-use trail along the utility corridor, like Paul mentioned, and future investments along South 7th Street, which we already know is an active bike route, but will likely become more important as the transit center opens. Improving connections at key locations, it's important to provide safe connections to the transit center and downtown. The plan itself includes several recommendations for both existing streets where future investment is needed. And five, while we do know there are lots of challenges with connecting the southwest section or the southwest quadrant of the subarea to the transit center, we also know that it's right for redevelopment. So the plan includes several short-term and long-term recommendations that would connect that southwest quadrant, not shown here, to the transit center. And then finally, the importance of retaining opportunities for light rail alignment and station location. So the plan recommends future studies, as well as we actively pursue this work, so that we can ensure that we are strong candidates for future light rail expansion. Next slide. The first thing to note here for this multimodal street grid is that the proposed locations here are extremely, extremely conceptual, and additional study and vetting is needed. But it is what we have as a conceptual illustration of a new street network and key improvements. But as future decisions are made and investments are made in the area, these concepts are going to evolve and change, and updates may be needed to the plan. But starting at the top right with connections to light rail, this is where the importance of really determining that preferred light rail alignment comes in. So we have one option identified here, but that, once that final location is determined, we'll have a better idea of what types of street improvements and investments are needed. The plan also proposes for softening along South Grady Way. As it currently exists, we know that it's not the most comfortable environment for pedestrians nor cyclists, and the plan proposes to expand pedestrian facilities here through the landscape buffers to improve both perceived and actual safety, as well as slow the speed of traffic. And then, in the core area itself, there are several new streets and distinct street types shown, as highlighted here in the magenta, blue, and purple. These new streets are important because they would help break down the existing parking lots in the core redevelopment area and create a better connected street network, which would help improve circulation for folks who are walking and biking and driving within the core, but also trying to access the transit center. So basically, the idea with these, by developing the new street, is to create the three-block connections that are needed to help redistribute traffic and provide more direct route for folks who are trying to reach Point A and Point B. Next slide. Graphic here shows proposed improvements for pedestrians and cyclists in the core and beyond, so throughout the entire subarea, and includes that shared-use path under the utility corridor and the shared-use path along Talbot. These recommendations are prioritizing both near-term and long-term investments to help improve connection to the transit center and circulation throughout the area. But by targeting specific areas like Lind, for example, would create better connectivity and more hospitable environment for those who are traveling to and from the southwest quadrant, just south of I-405 and west of 1627. Next slide. The model here is based on a very preliminary site design that was shared by Sound Transit in the early stages of this process, and the intent is to explore access to the transit center for bus vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists. The map itself delineates areas for pedestrian access with crosswalks, a pedestrian bridge, and planned bus circulation. But as I mentioned, you know, we know this graphic is based on a previous design phase, and changes have since been made to their site plan, including revision of the location of the parking garage, moving it closer to Rainier, to the western portion of the site, instead of its location shown. So, working with CED and Public Works, you know, there will be continued conversation with Sound Transit as this work progresses and the design phase advances. Just, you know, to make the point that this is all still very conceptual, even what we have here. Next slide. Moving on to open space and urban design, we are advancing six key design principles. So, one, creating that central main street that Paul talked a little bit about. So picture pedestrian-oriented retail with a higher density residential with ample streetscape amenities. Two, design and building streets with excellent pedestrian connections and landscaping, establishing parks and public open spaces under at least a portion of the power line corridors. And we've talked about this a bit, but the idea is that they can be activated by redevelopment or for programmatic uses, like sports, gathering, food trucks, lots of different options. And then, four, providing a central plaza or an open space for gathering surrounded by active uses. Five, enhance the stream buffer along the north edge of I-405. And six, require residential open space as part of new residential development, and small pedestrian-oriented open spaces as part of commercial development. And we do have this shown here on the graphic, but again, locations are conceptual, and, you know, much of this will be determined by investments and decisions that are made in the future. Next slide. A new network of open spaces and natural areas and green elements would help increase opportunities for recreation and social gathering, and also improve the ecological health of the subarea. So the plan itself recommends a mix of open space that offers opportunities for those who are living but also working in the area, so that they have connections to open space and nature. The purpose of the graphic really is just to inform the different types of open space where they could potentially be located from the, and, you know, a typology, from a town center gathering spaces to something more like a shared-use path, but is still very predominantly conceptual. Next slide. The subarea itself serves as an important gateway into Renton and the city center, and should be developed to create a strong sense of place for those who are not familiar with the area, so that, you know, when they're approaching, they recognize it as a place of significance or an important destination. Major gateways, like the ones highlighted in the southwest quadrant, that Rainier and Grady, and then South 7th Street and Talbot, are highlighted in the orange asterisk, and other smaller neighborhood gateways are shown to the, within the core, are in, shown in purple. Next slide. So I have two graphics here. It's both a bird's-eye view and a street view, but they're really intended to visually capture the concepts and recommendations that Paul and I have just covered. The bird's-eye view and street-level view graphics of the core redevelopment area, which, you know, to summarize, included the central main street creation, with improved pedestrian and bike amenities, and landscaping improvements. And then, in the bird's-eye graphic, toward the bottom right, there's that central plaza area with red food trucks. It's really intended to be that programmable space for public gathering. Also shown, the large parking lots that exist today are now broken down to improve connectivity and circulation. And you also get a sense of street improvements, like the bike lanes and crosswalks and landscaping. And then, the street view graphic on the right depicts the look and feel of the street with the mixed-use developments, the building form and design elements that we envision for the area, which we think will hopefully make it more of a attractive place for people who are living and working in the vicinity. Next slide. As we've shared, we are advocating for a future light rail service to Renton, and we know that this work requires early coordination and analysis to help identify possible alignment and station location. So as an extension of our TOD planning efforts, we contracted with a consultant to study potential alignment and station location, with the goal of really understanding how it would fit in the overall redevelopment of the subarea. And those findings from the study are not definitive, but both staff and our advisory committee revealed strong support for option three, because of the agreed construction opportunities, and largely due to the existing BNSF right-of-way. However, additional study is also needed here, but our work with the consultant lays out necessary next steps for the next phase of analysis. And last thing with the stakeholder feedback, we are actively still incorporating their feedback into the plan, and have already received feedback from property owners in the area, as well as our transit agency partners. And so far, this is what we've heard, is, one, really the need for flexibility for ground-floor commercial uses, and reason for this being to maximize viability of future leasing of commercial spaces at the transit center and throughout the larger study area. We know there's a need for continued pedestrian, or sorry, continued coordination for, to prevent displacement of existing businesses. And we hope to address some of those issues with the help of our economic development team, and having a targeted discussion with Sound Transit, and then, of course, working with existing property owners, so that we can address any concerns that they have. Also, the pedestrian access and safety, particularly when crossing South Grady Way, that remains a primary concern, and further study and right-of-way improvements are also needed and should be prioritized there. And we'll need to continue to coordinate with Sound Transit throughout the design phase to address those non-motorized access and circulation challenges. And then lastly, just as a general update that we wanted to share with the committee, we know from Sound Transit that the planned parking garage has been delayed to 2034, and expects that we will have Bus Rapid Transit and a transit center before the parking garage is constructed. But we know that Sound Transit is, in the future, will be working on an interim parking facility for the interim parking period when the transit center is open, but the garage is not. But for now, that's all the information that we have from Sound Transit. Our MFTE efforts are ongoing and will be adopted subsequently with the planning process, but this item will be going to Planning Commission this Wednesday, September 15, for the public hearing, and then we'll return to Planning Commission for their deliberation and recommendation in October.
You ready for questions and comments?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So, first of all, I'm going to open this time, because I just want to say that I haven't seen this presentation in a while, but I'm really impressed. It's a great body of work, so thanks to both of you, and everybody that's assisted you, and to the community for bringing forward the ideas. It's really true to what I was hoping that we would be sort of producing for this area. It's got some really neat ideas in it, some concepts I hadn't thought about. I want to really commend you for leaning forward on the Sound Transit light rail linkage. And as a reminder, for people that are maybe watching this presentation, there was money in Sound Transit III to look conceptually at future linkage of Renton to light rail. There's no money budgeted in Sound Transit III to actually extend that light rail, but there is some to conceptually look at it. And so, it's absolutely critical that we're doing that, because if there is a Sound Transit IV, we need to make sure that the Renton connection is part of that. And so, the only way we can do that is to already have a concept, if Sound Transit IV ends up going to Talbot. So, I don't know if there will be a Sound Transit IV, and I'm not saying that there will be, but it just, we would be ready this way. And so, thank you for that. Thanks for all the elements. One question I had was whether, you know, I can tell that there's potentially thousands of new units of transit-oriented development that could go into a site this large, that's this, that has this good of transit connection. Has there been any estimates yet of what sort of additional housing we might see there? Numbers of units or anything like that, or is it too early to speculate on that?
We certainly could just run some rough figures, but they would, of course, be based on our existing code today, so if the city council in the future wanted to, say, get greater residential density in this area of the city versus others, then those numbers would be, you know, would increase it, obviously. But if there's interest in that, we could get you a rough estimate of what that might look like.
You know, the reason it comes to mind for me is that I think forgetting funding, you know, assistance from the county and the state, certainly having the potential for new transit-oriented development that's right on the Bus Rapid Transit will be, become a priority. We're dealing with, obviously, limited funding by every level of jurisdiction, but housing on transit is incredibly valuable, so. Anyways, with that, I'm sure my colleagues have lots of questions, so I'll give them some of the airtime, and thank you again for the great work on this. I don't see any hands raised.
You've got Councilmember Benedetti and Councilmember O'Halloran, Mr. Sheriff.
Oh, thank you. I must have, oh, hold on, maybe I've got a... Oh, maybe I'm not officially the leader of this meeting. I'm not seeing the hands raised. So, okay, council, let's start with Councilmember O'Halloran.
Thank you, and thank you very much for all of the staff work on this, and this is the third or fourth time I've been led through this presentation, and each time I find something else of interest that I want to ask about. And with particular attention to the Rolling Hills Creek, and I understand that there's opportunity to increase buffering and potentially have some flood mitigation work in there, and it just occurs to me that in any of the options that we are looking at, one, two, and three, I think we really should focus on enhancing the Rolling Hills Creek. Daylighting it would be awesome, but with specific regard to flood mitigation, I think there are opportunities, if we really frame it, that that is our intention, is to enhance it for flood mitigation. I think there are opportunities to approach King County Flood Control District for, you know, urban stream grants, and there's other monies out there if we frame it as a flood mitigation project, rather than just a daylighting and enhancing project. And I have a couple other questions on timing, but maybe it's just too early in the game for that. But I just did want to mention that I think that would be an awesome, awesome asset to that area if we could daylight that creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti?
Thank you so much, Council President. You know, Katie and Paul, I was on the Planning Commission when this first came to, you all remember. I see that look, Katie, when it first came to the Planning Commission to consider this area as a TOD, and the Planning Commission said, "We ain't going to do it until you go back and do your homework." And I will say that this is absolutely proof that when you do something like that, beautiful things come of it, because I read the 90-page document that accompanies this, accompanies this presentation, and it is a work of beauty. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for the work that you put into this, for the real thoughtful planning process that went for it, that went with this. I really, I agree with Councilmember O'Halloran, that there is a lot to look at as we, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, very detailed questions that we can get to, but I am so grateful to see this, and so grateful to see the beauty of the work behind it. So congratulations to your department, truly fabulous.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's see, do we have other council members that have any questions? I don't see any hands raised at the moment. I was just going to ask, oh, I'll ask quickly, now I see Brian's hand, but I wanted to ask, let's see, I know that from my many years on the I-405 corridor executive committee that, 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 basically, we have a half-diamond interchange now at Talbot, and then we're planning to have another half-diamond and then we're planning to have another half diamond at Lind eventually, and eventually, and this is a very long term, but that the connection of 167 where it feeds right onto Rainier Avenue is intended to go away because the DOT says it's hard to run the Cloverleaf and have that connection all at the same time. And so the intention, the last I remember was that sometime in the future, and this could be 20 years from now, but Rainier Avenue would actually go through to West Valley Highway, which I think is kind of exciting because that sort of continues that neighborhood in a sense. But was that included as part of the planning process for this?
That's a great question, and the answer is no, quite frankly. And then the reason for that is that, again, this entirety of this plan is really just one big concept. It's really for us to, really kind of sets the stage for us to do the work in the coming years. And there are so many moving parts in this area. As you mentioned, all the different, you know, changes that can be made to state routes over the coming decades, and to plan for that right now would just be probably an exercise in, you know, in Madden even, insanity or something to that effect. So no, we didn't really concentrate on that. We figure we're gonna have to really roll up our sleeves and iron out the details as they unfold and really, you know, other decisions outside of our purview are made.
Sure. Okay, good. Okay, Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Council President Corman, and no worries. I raised my hand right as you were calling for it because I realized no one else had raised their hand yet. So totally good. So my question unsurprisingly is gonna be on housing, and the comment as far as number of units certainly piqued my interest and would be curious to see, you know, kind of I guess that range potential, maybe some of that more that's gonna come out of the Housing Action Plan, but of course, to delve down further than that because certainly I would think we'd want to obviously set a minimum density if nothing else. We don't have that already as far as what the growth potential would be here. But then looking further, I'm very interested in terms of the number of affordable units, and I realize and understand that the Housing Action Plan is gonna call out the strategies for that. My wondering is if this document shouldn't set out a little bit more vision as far as what's... So what I'm seeing left from this, and my question is, is there a goal to create permanently affordable housing? Because MFTE, that would create temporary affordable housing units, but I don't know that it would create the long-term units that I would like to see certainly around transit because I know long-term, the people who need transit most might very well get priced out of that area. So I'm just curious what strategies we might be embracing to make sure that there's always affordable units in the longer term, 50 years plus.
Certainly, great question, Councilmember McGurven. Yes, it was a little bit awkward in that both this and the Housing Action Plan are being developed concurrently. And so, you know, our approach was to look at the HAP because that's where the expertise lies in housing and especially affordable housing. But having said that, you know, while that kind of, I would say that's the toolbox, the HAP is the toolbox from which we can kind of pull various methods of creating affordable housing. But this plan, as Katie and I mentioned, doesn't kind of draw any kind of actual like concrete, this is where affordable housing is gonna go. So it kind of depends on those future partnerships that we establish. It depends on grant opportunities, it depends on future decisions that the city might make, for example, with regard to tax increment financing, which was not a part of the recommendation here. So how we get the affordable housing is still unknown. And I think a lot of that will be determined through future code updates. And then also, again, those partnerships and grant opportunities. Right now, it's pretty exciting that there actually are a number of grant opportunities for transit-oriented development that the state is providing. So it's really exciting that we're able to adopt this, hopefully in the near future, and really jump onto that application process and get started sooner or later.
Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Perez. You're muted, Councilmember.
I'm gonna follow up on what Councilman McGurven said about affordable housing. While we are desirable to keep, continue bringing more affordable housing around Renton, my guess is that we're still waiting to see regionally that there is a balance between the cities and that this is gonna be part of our new or review of the comprehensive plan. I guess you are still in conversations regionally about how much affordable housing it will be needed equitable among all the cities in the county. Am I right, Paul, on this?
That's correct, that is ongoing right now.
Okay, good. But my real question was about the parking. I love when you guys mention the parking, and then President Corman was right when she said part of Sound Transit III was to allocate funds for the study for the light rail. But as well as they allocated funds for the study of the light rail, they allocated funds for the parking. And in fact, they gave a timeline where the parking was going to be built. I have a lot of concerns about that, about how much they are gonna keep their promises because the money is supposed to be there in South Transit III. When I see presentations and I see, well, we don't know if the parking will be ready at this time, it kind of stresses me a little bit because I want to make sure that we are talking with the Sound Transit all the time, letting them know that we are ready to spark parking, I'm sorry. Not a park, it's a difference between a park and a parking. But I know that you understood what I was trying to say. So that will be my only concern, that we really are, keep reminding them that we are not asking for anything that the boarders already voted for, which was giving us the funds for a parking lot at the Grady Way. Thank you.
And thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Thank you, yes. So I want to take an opportunity to respond to Councilmember Perez for her concern about parking. And all of the meetings that I have been involved with, believe me, they know we want our parking. The tough conversations and a lot of trade-offs, but they are very well aware of where Renton stands on our desire for our parking for BRT. Having said that, I'll come back to this presentation, which is, I want to talk a little bit about housing in the TOD as well, follow up on Mr. McGurven's comments. And I wanted to ask about ownership opportunity in the TOD. Are we hoping to get a percentage of owner-occupied units? Or is this strictly a rental concept? Thank you.
Excellent question. Not quite sure if I know how to answer it. Unless one of our attorneys is on the call, I don't believe that actually we can dictate whether or not units are rental or available for home occupation, or sorry, owner occupation such as condominiums. The plan really envisions vertical development, that is, you know, apartment-type residential units versus, say, townhouses, which is not as great a use of land in terms of the residential units, et cetera. So I would say that it envisions both, we hope to have homeowners, but really hope that it's at the state level where they've made the kind of regulations for condominium creation easier for developers and less financial liability. In my eyes, that's really the issue at heart with creating apartment-type saddle flats units that are available for ownership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you. You know, Councilmember Perez, I have to say thank you very much for bringing up something that had been a concern in the back of my head when I was reading through the plan. And one of the incentives that we are considering as a help to try and bring the housing is that we would waive certain parking requirements. And I understand the logic of that around the TOD, and I also know that other cities have fallen into that mistake when it comes to the parking piece, particularly if the parking lot that we are so hoping for, the structured parking that we're so hoping for is in jeopardy. So as we make those choices, I think we have to be very, very careful about the trade-off.
And if I could just respond to that, I think that's a great point. And I guess goes back to the rationale of we're not planning anything yet because we don't really know what the future holds for us. Katie and I were just surprised, pretty recently, that that parking garage was not gonna come online for another 10 years or so, so that was a big surprise for us. Proud of part of that work team dedicated to those improvements. Both respect to private development, say, for example, within that core area between Southwest Grady Way, Rainier and Talbot. Certainly in the future, when we have light rail and we have bus rapid transit going, certainly the parking minimum is what we expect to be fairly low. At the beginning, they might not be as low. We might require the same amount of parking that we require now because there might not be enough transit facilities to accommodate that and have the expectation that it's not gonna become a burden elsewhere. But we also heard in the developers forum, which was incredibly valuable to us in the process, that there might be other workarounds for that. So for example, allow developers to, instead of creating that ground floor commercial space, use it as ground floor commercial parking, or sorry, not commercial parking, but parking right now. And then the future, upon some condition or requirement, we require them to dedicate that as commercial in the future when that parking requirement is no longer there. It's a bit of a tricky, it's really threading that needle, but we hope that we might be able to come up with some flexible solutions that give residents the parking they need now but accommodate the future less desire for one single person occupancy vehicles in the future.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at, oh, Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to clear up a misconception, and I don't think it's a misconception from our staff. I think that it is a misconception that Sound Transit staff conveyed. When we did our realignment process last month for Sound Transit, we said that we were going to do what we could to have projects done on time, as close to on time as the Sound Transit, to the Sound Transit III timeline as possible. If, and we passed an amendment to that, that Mayor David Baker and I did on parking, saying that any and all available funds that we have for parking should be dedicated to parking at the front and not at the back end. So I understand, and as a board, we've had a conversation that we're gonna have to talk to Sound Transit staff about how they're messaging this to municipalities because what they said is not accurate, and it's not with the spirit of what we did with realignment. So I would hate for anyone to leave this thing thinking that Renton's not getting their thing till 2034. That is not what we as a board voted for or voted on. We voted to A, try to stick to the Sound Transit III schedule as much as we can based on funds that are allowed. And B, any and all available money that we have, we dedicate to making sure that parking is taken care of.
Councilmember Prince, thank you very much for that clarification, and it shows why we're very fortunate to have you on the board now for Sound Transit. So thank you for your representation there. I was thinking about asking you about that, and I appreciate you stepping in. Councilmember Perez.
Yeah, thank you very much, Councilmember Prince. This is very important information. Because Paul, I almost have a heart attack when you say, "With God's gonna happen in 10 years." And when you say, remember, in my brain, when you say that is because they are taking the money from the parking to put the light rail in Redmond or in Kirkland or in Esauqua. So that is my thinking all the time. I know where the money goes, and we should be the priority because we are not getting a light rail. So thank you for letting us know that the money that has been assigned for parking should be there. And they were promises that were made to the boarders at the time, and they voted based on those numbers. They voted based on, okay, we're gonna have the BRT sooner than the light rail, we're gonna have the parking lot sooner than the light rail, and now, oh no, we need more money because the light rail is too expensive. So thank you for being an advocate for Renton, and I would like to see, Paul, if the staff of Sound Transit gets on board of this because it's really, if the truth is that they think that it's 10 years from now, that is gonna really impact the region that we are trying right now to design for. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Thank you, Council President. I'm looking at chapter eight in this plan, implementation, and I'm looking at a couple of the items under the multimodal access and transportation. And it seems to me, there's a couple of things under near-term to midterm that are safety-related issues, analysis impact of traffic patterns, and opportunities for, say, crossings for Grady and Rainier, and implementing the Renton's bike and Trails master plan, and just a couple other things that are really specifically safety-related. And my question is, why near-term or midterm, why not now? Because those safety issues exist now, even prior to this TOD going in.
Yes, that's a great point. I believe that those existing improvements that are referenced in that implementation chart are based on existing plans, both Renton's capital improvement plan as well as King County Metro's accessibility plan, I think is what it's entitled. I think that those already have kind of dates and funding mechanisms set up before them. My guess as to why they might be near or midterm would just be funding, as most infrastructure improvements usually is based on that. That'd be my guess.
Thank you.
I guess I'd just like to add to that. Councilmember O'Halloran, I think if we, as a council, see safety improvements that we feel are high priority, we, you know, we could and should bring those up and look for funding. So it is for what it's worth. I think that's a good line of reasoning. So I don't see any other hands raised at this point. So I think maybe I'm about ready to close the meeting. Any final comments by anyone? All right, I think we'll look forward to seeing how some of the other reviews go, what the Planning Commission thinks. But this is exactly what we do to get a consensus on a plan for such an important part of town. So again, thank you, Paul and Katie, for the great presentations and all the work you've done on this. And thanks to staff that have helped you and to the community for helping. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the committee of the whole meeting, and we'll reconvene in 24 minutes for our regular council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.